... November 2nd, 2016, at 7:05 PM. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Ives?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. If you please join me in the flag slum. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, many of you know that one of my very favorite things to do is something that's on the agenda tonight, swearing in of new police officers. However, tonight, and this is no degradation of the event for the gentlemen that are going to be sworn in tonight. One of my colleagues on the commission, after eight years, is going to be gone. And he has been a staunch supporter of the police, so I would like to ask Commissioner Rocky Smith if he would be swearing in these officers.
Thank you.
There you go.
Do you mind if Chief Bens says a few words?
Sure, go ahead, Chief Bens.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm just going to give you a quick introduction into our two new officers that we're going to be swearing in. We, the first one, I'll go with the most seasoned lateral officer. Both of these officers come to us with police experience, which is fantastic for us. The first is Mike Valenti. This is Mike here, go ahead and stand up, Mike. Mike just retired from the Portland Police Bureau after 25 years' service. He spent about 20 years in their traffic division and very passionate about traffic safety. Every time I run into somebody from Portland in the last, I don't know, year since we've been talking to Mike about coming over, I always know when we're getting good ones when I hear people say a bunch of great things. And we've heard just a bunch of tremendous things about Mike and really happy to be having him aboard. He retired on his 20th wedding anniversary. He's married to his wife, Michelle, they have two teenage daughters. And in his off-time, he likes hunting, fishing, and working in the yard, so welcome. Travis Shachtel, you want to come front center here with Mike?
Travis is, we just stole from West Lynn Police Department.
Woo-hoo! Betty will be happy to hear that.
He saw the light.
And their chief's downright angry about this one.
Sorry, at least you won't have to sleep on duty.
He was there for almost three years, and he was there for a year as a reserve officer. Again, tremendous things that everybody at his organization said about him, and we're real happy to have him. He grew up in West Lynn, went to West Lynn High School, went to Portland State where he got a Bachelor of Science in Sociology. He's married to his wife, Carissa, and did you say Liam? And, and he is here as well. He likes dirt biking and mountain biking. And, so with that...
We haven't had much success with bikes and police officers, by the way, I'm just saying.
We sold a motorcycle there.
Thank you, that really...
You're very welcome.
Appreciate that. Travis and Michael, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I then state your name.
I, Travis Shachtel.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the law...
That I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully performing my duties.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations.
So if you all want to take a second to bale with the kids, feel free to do so. Okay, so we have two more proclamations tonight. 16-628 is proclamation honoring Oregon City's fallen officers. Officer Robert Libkey and Officer George Hanlon. Wasn't aware.
I'm just going to have pictures running in the back, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I don't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. A little warning next time. So this proclamation is to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting the community. Whereas law enforcement is an honorable, hard-working profession that diligently seeks to make our community more livable and safe, and whereas there is no greater sacrifice an officer can make for their community than to give their life, and whereas the death of a police officer shocks the very soul of community, our government and the very freedoms the officers have sworn to protect, and whereas the impact of this tragedy upon the officer's family, friends, department, and community is immeasurable, and whereas our hearts and thoughts go out to the many killed in action while serving to protect our community, now therefore I, Dan Holliday, Mayor of City of Oregon City, along with the City Commission and the citizens of Oregon City, Oregon, extend our heartfelt condolences to the families of the following officers. Reserve Police Officer Robert Libkey, lost on November 3rd, 2013, and Police Officer George J. Hanlon, lost on April 23rd, 1906. These officers have been lost but will never be forgotten. This community will forever be grateful. We ask for a moment of silence as we remember Oregon City's valuable public servants and pray for the healing and hope into the future. And when to swear of, I am here to set my hand this second day of November 2016, Dan Holliday, Mayor of Oregon City. Okay. So this second one, and Chief asked me to remind folks that tomorrow is the third anniversary of the loss of Officer Libkey. I know that happened just a couple, three blocks from my house on the other side of the canyon, and Betty and I actually went out and did some traffic control because the cops were all busy doing real stuff. So, it hits us every year about this time. The next one is the proclamation in observance of Veterans Day, November 11th, 2016. And like I said, I normally don't read these proclamations, but as a veteran, there's been a couple of folks in my community who told me I better do this or, you know, else. So, "In observance of Veterans Day, which will be observed on November 11th, 2016, honoring Oregon City employees and citizens who are veterans and/or are currently serving in the military, reserves, or National Guard. Whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history, and whereas honorable service performed in the defense of our nation is the highest form of citizenship, and whereas 27..." Okay. It says 27 but 28, in parentheses, Oregon City employees, which is approximately 20% of the city workforce are veterans or are current members of the armed forces, and whereas the City of Oregon City is an employer, supporter of the guard and reserve, and whereas at the state level, an estimated 52,000 Oregonians have served in Iraq and Afghanistan since 9/11, and whereas 142 Oregon veterans have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, and whereas in conjunction with Veterans Day observed on November 11th, 2016, the City of Oregon City is proud to recognize the men and women who have served to protect our freedom, and whereas our hearts and thoughts go out to the many killed in action or disabled while serving their country, now therefore I, Dan Holliday, Mayor of Oregon City, do call upon all employees and citizens to observe Veterans Day with the appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. And when to swear of, I appear unto set my hand this second day of November 2016." A blue pen, there you go. Okay, so, moving on, we have a presentation from the Oregon City Friends of Trees. And doesn't tell me who that is.
Thank you, I'd like to introduce Chris Hakari, the Regional Programs Manager for Friends of Trees.
Go, Chris.
Hello there. And I want to thank you all so much for welcoming myself, representing Friends of Trees, and one of our board members, Rich Wellhoney, here tonight to present to you a little bit about the work that our nonprofit is doing in Oregon City, and also cordially invite you all up in front here, Mayor and Commissioners, but also the peanut gallery. Please join us as well. So again, my name is Chris Hakari, I'm a Regional Programs Manager... Thank you. Regional Programs Manager with Friends of Trees. And first off, who's heard of Friends of Trees? Show of hands. Wow! Outstanding, this is outstanding. Who has planted at a Friends of Trees planting in Oregon City? Okay, in other communities? Okay, that's, that's actually fantastic, glad to hear this. For those of you who may be lesser aware of us, I will share though... The right button? There we go. Thank you. I just want to share that we are a nonprofit, we were started in Portland 27 years ago in a neighborhood that had seen better days, a little rough around the edges, if you will. And the whole notion was to get people out on the streets together, doing something good for the community. And so what this amounted to essentially was planting trees, a very simple, easy, but very impactful activity that really anyone could partake in. And that was our humble beginning. Nowadays... Thank you. We are planting in nearly 20 communities throughout western Oregon and up into southwest Washington. In total, we've planted over 600,000 trees and native shrubs across that general region, growing every year, and in fact, in the last five years, that, that curve is steeply growing as we have been expanding into new communities and re-engaging in some of the outer Portland fringe communities, which Oregon City happens to be one of. In terms of Friends of Trees planting, don't let me call you a fringe community for any other reason but that. And here we are, the planting program overview. Many of you may have planted with our Neighborhood Trees Program, and that is the active program that we offer here in Oregon City at the moment. Here, we have neighborhood coordinators who help within each of the neighborhoods that we're planting and getting the word out and letting their neighbors know that, hey, Friends of Trees is working with the city to encourage tree planting, largely street trees, but also yard trees as well. And this is largely for heat island mitigation, for stormwater management, for property value increases, and also the benefits of health that, you know, we've learned over the years happen in being surrounded by green things, to put it very simply. Our other program, which we'd love to extend into the Oregon City area, is our Green Spaces Program, and that has more of a restoration focus. Largely, we'll work in parks and other more natural areas to, you know, remove invasive species and then replant with our native trees and shrubs. And again, Oregon City, I mentioned, we were here once, we kind of went dormant, interest waned for a few years there, but we were back on the scene as of last, well, I guess, two, for us, two planting seasons ago. Our planting seasons are typically October through April. We were here in April of 2015 to kick off the city's Arbor Day planting. Many of you may have heard of that, those of you that work for the city. And then we were back again last December where we planted almost 100 trees here in central Oregon City in the McLaughlin and Barclay Hills neighborhoods. That was an outstanding event for us, great community turnout, and the fact that, really, after kind of being completely silent for 15 years, the fact that we got 95 trees planted was just, you know, phenomenal. We are in the throngs of planting, our 2016 neighborhood planting. And this is going to be held again the first weekend in December. We're going to be planting in McLaughlin, Barclay Hills, and also Rivercrest. So kind of moving up the, up the hill and hopefully further south in coming seasons. We'll be meeting again at the Zion Lutheran Church, pardon my typo with Lutheran. But, yeah, we would love to encourage any and all of you to join us there. We are also accepting signup to get tree requests up until November the 14th. That's not on this slide, it should be. But, yeah, so you got 12 days to sign up to get a tree in front of your home or behind your home, again, we do yard trees. And please share that message. I did provide a flyer for each of you, as well as a business card for my colleague, Ian Bonham. He is the coordinator, he'll be basically managing all the details for this event. And if anyone has any event-specific questions, he's a good go-to person. Before giving up the stage here, I'd just like to, again, introduce Rich Wellhoney. He is an Oregon City resident and a Friends of Trees board member.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I've been on the board about three years, it's a great organization. And I pretty much got the planting trees thing, speaking Friends of Trees, I figured that's what they do. But back in the mission statement, it says, "We plant trees together." And I want to talk a little bit about that. The planting together part is really important, that's the building community aspect, planting trees. And, for example, in Oregon City last year, it was great, we all show up at Zion Lutheran Church. The church was very generous in donating their big parking lot, which is real important to stage 95 or 110 trees, and all the people, all the tools. And then they have a huge basement, nice kitchen, and that's where the potluck was afterwards. I'm sure you mentioned the potluck afterwards for all the volunteers, but we should repeat that again.
It was on the slide, but let's say it again, free food.
Very good at building community when you're eating all that wonderful food. And the actual planting was great because my wife and I moved here four years ago because this is a walking neighborhood, we knew that. And getting to know the neighbors has been great, and this is another activity which I strongly encourage anybody to turn out because you, you cannot avoid meeting new people when you're on your hands and knees in the mud planting trees in, in early December. So, and then the community building aspect, that extends to the businesses. Starbucks up on the hill by the college donated a giant tanker to coffee. Singer Hill Cafe donated the donuts and bagels. The city was very supportive, so that's what I thought was really cool was you had church, city, business, volunteers, and the nonprofit Friends of Trees all coming together. And at the end of the day, you could walk by or drive by and see the trees, and then also, another, another layer of community has been built as well. So that's, that's what I took away from it, Chris.
Great. Well, I really appreciate you sharing your experience, Rich, again, as a local community member. I think that really helps, you know, give some street cred to what we're doing. You know, we really do care about the places we work. Again, we're in about 20 communities now, from Eugene up north of the city of Vancouver, we're planning in the county, up in the county neighborhoods there, near Salmon Creek, the Sandy River Delta, all the way west to Forest Grove, and bunches and bunches of places in between. One last thought I'll just leave you with is outside of that really unforgettable experience of getting out and getting muddy and eating good food with, you know, neighbors you, you never met before, you do also get that lasting memory where you're walking down the street and, hey, I planted that, oh, I planted that tree! Yeah, it, it's a great conversation starter and it's a legacy that you can pass on. And we really, really appreciate the city's support. And especially Pete Walter has been just a, a champion of ours for years now, and, and he was really, really critical in bringing Friends of Trees back to Oregon City. So, thanks to Pete and the rest of the city staff and everyone for being behind us.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Thank you for all your work there, that's great.
Where do the trees come from?
Oh, good question. Seed, alright. Usually they start at seeds, but we, we obtain the trees from all Willamette Valley nurseries. Probably our furthest south nursery is the Albany-Corvallis area, but most of them are really between probably Aurora and Clackamas County, a little bit of Washington County, but really within about 50-mile radius. So, we really are supporting those communities as well, and that's an explicit desire of ours. So we are trying to not only provide trees in the urban areas and in these natural areas, but also help to buoy that economy, you know, to the best of our abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Seeds December 3rd.
Yeah, sure.
And there are some additional flyers in the back corner if anyone would like them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're on to the regular agenda, we're up to citizen comment. I don't see anything on the agenda, is there any citizen wishing to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is everybody okay with the agenda as it's written?
Yes.
Okay, so first up is public hearing, PC 16-106, appeal. 16-01, appeal of Historic Review Board approval of a new home in the Kanema National Registered District. Ms. Gardner, or Ms. Turway, who are we going with?
Thank you very much.
Alright.
The city received an application to build a new single-family home near the intersection of Fourth and Apperson. Due to the location within our National Registered Historic District, this application went before the Historic Review Board. It was approved, however, the Historic Review Board placed a condition of approval removing a breezeway that connected the home to a garage. We did receive an appeal associated with that condition of approval for the breezeway. Christina Robertson Gardner is here to give you back more background information as well.
Thank you, Ms. Turway, I'll try to make this brief and keep to the highlights, but AP 1601 is the appeal of HR 1606. The properties, as mentioned, the property is located in the Kanema National Registered District and all new construction. Goes in front of the Historic Review Board. This actually, excuse me, was also previously reviewed by the Historic Review Board by another owner applicant, so this looks familiar, it's actually has come in front of the City Commission before. That approval was expired, and the new owner submitted, for the most part, pretty much the same proposal. The Historic Review Board approved the proposal, next slide, but they did actually include condition of approval number nine that removed the breezeway you see right there from the application. The unfortunate part is because of a family emergency, the applicant was unable to attend that meeting, and they indicated in their request for appeal that if they were at that meeting, they would have requested a continuance to allow the Historic Review Board to review a potentially revised breezeway at a future meeting. And so really what this appeal is asking is, because of the family emergency, they're asking to move, to allow the City Commission to remand this application back to the Historic Review Board solely to discuss condition of approval number nine and a potentially revised breezeway. So there's two procedural items the City Commission will need to review tonight. One is this record is closed, and the revised breezeway that was part of the appellant's packet cannot be entered into the record. And so as part of your decision tonight, the City Commission should reject and not consider the appellant's redesigned breeway as part of any of your decision-making tonight. If the City Commission does approve the request for a remand back to the Historic Review Board, the applicant will need to waive the 120-day decision deadline to at least March 1st, 2017, I think it's the end of December right now.
That says 2107 to me, but...
Oh, excuse me. Apologies. The, the Historic Review Board will also have to re-notice the meeting, so it'll most likely be in the January Historic Review Board meeting. So really, the City Commission has three options this evening. One, deny the appeal, AP 1601, and uphold the Historic Review Board's decision to conditionally approve the applicant's request to construct a residence in the Kanema National Registered District and confirm the Historic Review Board's findings for the request to remove the breezeway. Two, allow the remand back to the Historic Review Board to open the record solely to discuss the option of a revised breezeway. The Historic Review Board will be the final decision-maker on this unless appealed. Or three, approve AP 1601 and remove condition of approval number nine from the Historic Review Board's conditional approval of the HR application. The city staff believes that the Historic Review Board did not err in their decision-making and did provide findings for the removal of the breezeway. And therefore, staff is recommending the City Commission deny the appeal. The applicant can come back with a request for a modification for, at a separate process in the next two years if they want to pursue a revised breezeway. However, if the City Commission does see that there were unique circumstances of this application because of the family emergency, the remand would have to go back, most likely in the January Historic Review Board meeting, and the applicant would need to extend the 120-day notice. So I'm available if there are any questions.
Any questions before we take the rest of the public testimony? Then I'm going to open the public hearing, is the applicant here? Then the applicant has 15 minutes. Name and city residence for the record, please.
Alexunyshenko, residence 17323.
Just the city's fine.
City of Milwaukee.
Okay.
We apologize, due to family emergency, we're not able to make to the meeting, and...
Can you sit up, see if the microphone can get you? Thank you.
Would like to remand the breezeway, if that's possible, for the next historic meeting.
Okay. Is that all?
Yeah, I think Christina said pretty much everything that...
Okay. But do you have any questions, the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any... Which way am I going here? No, I went the wrong way. Thank you. Are there any folks from the public who wish to testify? Then I will close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a discussion. Is somebody up? I don't see it. Maybe in the wrong place, Commissioner Smith?
The Historic Review Board is there for a reason, and the Historic Review Board did a good job in looking at this project. One of the things that, you know, one major thing that makes historic houses or historic neighborhoods the way they are is that it's consistent with what was there in the past. And, you know, we can't stipulate every single thing, but one real key factor in what makes those houses look like they fit into a historic neighborhood is that they're not attached to a garage. Garages weren't built that way, garages were built separately from the house. And in a national historic neighborhood, even if it is a brand-new house, I think the garage needs to be separate, I think the breeze... So I think the Historic Review Board made the right decision. And so I would support denying the appeal.
Any else?
So, having sat on the Historic Review Board for 10 years, and, you know, we always got, that conversation always came up, you know, that we were doing something with our property, you know, and... But the idea was that we had a consistent set of guidelines there. And now that's why you see these historic homes selling for $400,000 and $500,000, because everybody had the same guidelines, even your neighbors. So, and the HRB continues to do a good job. And I feel that myself too, I'm in, looking at denial here too. And I feel that myself too, I'm in, looking at denial here too, so...
So, let me ask you a question, Ms. Turway. When the Historic Review Board was, was seeing this, did the applicant notify you prior to the meeting that they had a family emergency? Or was that an after-the-fact kind of thing?
They did not. They had a, an emergency happen the day of the hearing. They failed to notify staff or request a continuance, which is why the hearing was still held.
Okay. Well, while I agree with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shaw, I think our... What's the word I'm looking for? Our culture here is to allow everybody to have the opportunity to have their say. And while, you know, sometimes the law gets in the way and says, you know, you missed a filing deadline, that's it, you got no chance. I think in this case, I would be willing to, to remand it back to give the applicant an opportunity to talk to the Historic Review Board and see if he can convince them that he has an idea that will work for everybody, rather than just shut him down and say no. So, that's my opinion. I'd be willing to hear what the rest of the commission has to say about that. Commissioner Hyde?
Well, I, I, I think that that's a, would be a nice gesture. I think that it can still be done by denying the appeal and allowing him to come in to, what is it, file another application for revision?
Yes, the applicant could apply for a modification application to modify and...
Are there additional fees and things that go along with that?
It's five hundred dollars. It's half the original fee.
On, on the other hand, if, if, if we had to, if staff did it and we had to put the notice out, then staff would have, be, have to incur those costs for the notification. Is that right?
That's correct. If we remand it back to Historic Review Board, we would have to renotice it in the paper into neighborhoods and so forth. The fee for the appeal is fifty dollars, so our cost to renotice would exceed the appeal fee.
Any else? Motion?
I move to deny the appeal of the Historic Review Board approval of a new home on Canema National Registered District, PC sixteen dash one oh six.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Reluctantly, aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
I have a problem with the fact that we aren't giving this applicant an opportunity within the system currently to go back and, and try when, you know, by circumstances beyond their control, they couldn't make the hearing. So, I'm, I'm going to vote no. And then it's done and we can do whatever after that.
I guess my point would be that if they go back, still going to recommend not having, going to recommend having a breezeway. And there shouldn't be a breezeway there.
Well, I understand, but I understand that he has a, some kind of another thing that he wanted to talk to the Historic Review Board about, so that's fine. We'll move on. General business sixteen dash...
Mayor, before you move on, could I also make sure I understand that the, the commission specifically rejected the additional information that was, that the applicant had submitted, which was a picture?
Yes.
Okay.
So, sixteen six twenty-seven, second reading of ordinance sixteen dash ten eleven, Amendment of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter one twelve dot one six, to include a new section, twelve dot one six dot oh seven oh, park exclusions. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I will keep this short as you've already heard this at previous, at the previous readings. This ordinance sixteen dash ten eleven will allow sworn officers to exclude individuals from parks for thirty, ninety, and a hundred and eighty days, depending on the number of infractions, with the opportunity for an appeal process through the court system as well as through the city manager's office. At that, I will open it up to discussion and questions.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve sixteen dash one zero one one.
Second reading?
Second.
Ordinance number sixteen dash one zero one one, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code, creating section twelve point sixteen point oh seven oh to allow for exclusion of individuals from Oregon City Parks.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Moving on, sixteen dash six two six, second reading of ordinance number sixteen dash one zero one two, amending section six, twelve dot sixteen dot zero two zero of the Oregon City Municipal Code to ban the use of tobacco in Oregon City public parks. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Again, this is the second reading. As we discussed at previous commission meetings, this was brought to staff through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. They had several public meetings at which, last public meeting on June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, recommended to come to commission to recommend a tobacco-free policy in Oregon City Parks. We heard at the public work session on October eleventh and then the first reading on October nineteenth in regards to banning tobacco products from Oregon City Parks. At that, I will open up to questions and comments.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve second read, reading of ordinance number sixteen dash ten twelve.
Further discussion? Hearing done. Call roll, please.
Let me hear you.
Oh, Mr. Kabizman.
You were doing so well.
We need a second though, too.
Was there a second? Ordinance number sixteen dash...
Hold on. We don't have a second?
There was a second.
Oh, you did, okay.
Oh, I swear I heard somebody.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
Got to hit the button.
Okay. Ordinance number sixteen dash one zero one two, an ordinance amending section twelve point one six point oh two oh of the Oregon City Municipal Code to ban the use of tobacco in public parks within Oregon City Parks.
Further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
No.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
No. Motion passes. We move on. Sixteen dash six oh two, memorandum of understanding with Clackamas River Water for payment terms for a joint engineering study. The other, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
He's now the other Lewis.
I'm now the other.
Yeah. It all depends on who comes up first in the agenda.
I'll continue to be first on the agenda.
We're going to be jockeying over that one for a while. Well, the, so I guess I would like to start this one with the cities had a long relationship with Clackamas River Water and provisional water service, mostly outside the city, but in some cases inside the city as well. And we have had, I would say, a tenuous, fast relationship with Clackamas River Water, but it feels very much like it's getting better. And so, we're kind of excited about this agreement. And I would say over the last year, under the new general manager, Todd Heidrichan, with Clackamas River Water, we've been able to make some progress. And it's kind of aligned with an agreement that we signed a couple of years ago that, that we're, that's part of the reason why we're bringing this agreement to you is that that, I want to say it's a two thousand twelve agreement, I should know that.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen agreement. We committed to providing this joint, or participating in this joint engineering study. And so, that's what we're bringing for you today. The, the study emphasis is, is really about looking at, at both jurisdictions, our boundaries, looking at future water service provision, doing a little better job of laying that out. Our master planning in areas outside the city is good, but it's got some areas that really have some uncertainty for us and the staff trying to implement long-range plans, especially in the Beaver Creek area and the Park Place area. It's complicated. So, one of the examples of that is the Evergreen Homes mix-use development that's approved out across from the high school. And part of that was an agreement that you folks approved for water provision. It's a temporary agreement. The long-term intent is that those areas would be served by Oregon City. So, this joint engineering study is funded fifty percent by the city and fifty percent by CRW. They've already signed the agreement, and we're asking you to execute the same agreement. And one of the, several of the reasons why I think I'm looking forward to this agreement is because, for one, the settlement agreement has a deadline that we extended just recently to complete it in two thousand, by two thousand eighteen, May of two thousand eighteen. So, I'd like to get that work started. It's been a long time since we've familiarized ourselves with some of the existing agreements that we have with Clackamas River Water. So, this will give us that opportunity to get very up close and familiar with those agreements and revise or make suggestions for revisions as necessary. As I said earlier, our master, master planning for some of the areas is vague, and we will benefit from this study in those areas and hopefully provide some clarity. We have the opportunity to identify rate impacts and update rate models and methodologies. As a result of this study, we will be able to obtain more information on the CRW backbone project with long-term intentions by CRW. So, that's something that's new. This will be, this study will recognize, obviously, that this will be the first time in a long time that there's two water service providers on this side of the Clackamas River. And that's a big deal. I mean, it really does kind of change the game a little bit in terms of how we serve our customers, how that affects South Fork Water Board. We'll be able to obtain more information, oh, I already said that one. We will be able to learn more about the CRW assets, like their pump stations and reservoirs and force mains, and how we may share those or acquire those. We'll be able to establish the treatment and distribution capacity. It may make sense in some areas to utilize their source water versus the South Fork Water source water, so that'll be something that we'll be talking about. And this agreement has already triggered the effort for water model update. So, we're taking the water model that we created back in two thousand twelve, updating that. So, that's good news. And a requirement to this project, we'll also, we've also done a lot of mapping improvements specific to individual water meters that are ours or theirs, trying to better refine that information and update that information. And then, we hope to get to updates to the wheeling rates that we charge to CRW for the cost of us getting water from our system to their system. So, we haven't done that in many years, and it'll be a good opportunity to do that. So, all these things will either be a part of the agreement or trigger those, make recommendations for those kind of things. So, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm really interested in getting started with this and see it as a, as a benefit to the city. It's about six months worth of work. So, once we execute this agreement, we'll be working with... By, by the way, tonight, on your consent agenda, there's also an agreement with Murray Smith and Associates to facilitate and do that work. And so, we'll be working with them to get a more detailed schedule, but essentially six months. And in that, near the end of that time, we'll be reporting back to the city commission with some of the results.
So, Oregon City's total cost is seventy and change?
It's, I should know that. It's, I'd have to look at the commission report, but I want to say it was, yes, somewhere in that area.
So, it's a hundred and twenty-seven divided by two?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Questions? Is there...
No, actually, it's, it's a good thing, because I know we've got some areas that we're going to have trouble servicing up there and stuff, so this is probably a good time to do this, so...
Do you need a motion, or is it not good enough for you, Mr. Conkle?
We, we need a motion, please.
Okay, well, let's have a motion then.
Move to approve sixteen dash six, oh, sorry.
Oops, sorry.
I'll second it. Go for it.
Motion to approve memorandum of understanding with Clackamas River Water for payment terms for a joint engineering study.
Second.
Leaded by Commissioner Hyde, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. Does anybody have, oh, Mr. Manis, sorry, we got this little small one. Tri-City Service District Discussion, Mr. Conkle.
He tried to get by that one, didn't he?
Not really.
He put the exciting one at the last.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. So, here tonight to discuss and provide an update on the proposal by Clackamas County, County Board of Commissioners, as well as Tri-City, who they are also the board of, and Clackamas County Service District One, for which they are also the board of, to create the Water Environmental Services for which they will be the board of. So, with this proposed agreement that is being reached between CCSD and Tri-City Service Number One, they're proposing to consolidate the operations assets of Tri, Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District entirety, entirely into the Water Environmental Services, a new county district being created. It is a ORS one ninety, including the Tri-City facility, the Kellogg facility, other treatment and surface water assets previously held by the partners, and all future assets shall be operated as a combined system for the benefit of all partners and our taxpayers in a manner set forth within. I received this at three AM last Friday.
I got it at nine.
And was advised that there will be a work session by the Board of County Commissioners yesterday and that they will be taking it up as an emergency ordinance tomorrow at ten AM. This did not go before the Tri-City Advisory Committee. It was not commented on by staff, nor were input provided. In my opinion, this, this seems to be written as a punitive measure against Tri-City. We also questioned the nature of the emergency as to why this needs to be done.
That's an election.
No.
That would be the, that would be the simple answer.
Actually, that's not the reason for the emergency. The reason for the emergency clause is because under state law, if you pass down the emergency clause, it does not come under the referral. So, we couldn't even go out and collect signatures to refer it back to this, to the voter.
Essentially, all the voting rights, all the investment in Tri-City, essentially, you could imagine what will, what they have created are two. They will leave CCSD and Tri-City, their boundaries intact. But you could think of it as all the assets of those, those districts, those, those entities are being put into West. So, really what you have is a boundary. I think this just exemplifies the concerns that we have had over the years of the decision-making. And how do you, when you negotiate all sides of your own agreement, represent the interests of the ratepayers and users of that district?
Especially when none of the members of that said commission reside inside the boundaries of either district.
Think that if I were to come to you and say, I have negotiated an agreement with West Lynn, and we're going to enter into this agreement, and by the way, we can get out of it at any time we want, but we give up all of our assets in Oregon City to West Lynn in order to do so. I would never, ever enter into an agreement like that. So, to say that with the fiduciary responsibility to represent Tri-City, that that is in the interest of ratepayers is very difficult to accept. There's also a clause in here that allows the CCSD debt is theoretically supposed to stay with CCSD, unless a majority of the board decides that it can be reassigned. In what world would we ever agree to take on the debt of another organization, let alone allow an opportunity for that to happen? The more you, the more times I think myself, Mr. Kabizman and Mr. Lewis, read this, essentially hostile takeover of the Tri-City Service District, it is infuriating. Unfortunately, we did go into Clackamas County Court this, this morning and try to request a temporary restraining order from the county adopting this tomorrow via an emergency. The judge determined that this is a political issue. This is not a legal issue. The remedy, should there be any violation of law, is essentially equated to kind of like an antitrust decision. We have large corporations that get put together, attorneys, you know, courts can come in and they'll break those large corporations down into smaller entities. Position of the, the judge was that, you know, things could be returned back to normal. Our position was, it's a lot easier to stop it from happening than trying to unwind it once it's in place. I'm at a little bit of a, a loss here tonight as to a really good strategy moving forward. We're proposing to go before the Board of County Commissioners. We're proposing to go before the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow morning. Put it on the record, there are so many concerns that in the three minutes we're probably gonna be allowed, we will get nowhere near addressing all of them. It seems to be an infringement on the governance of a local jurisdiction. It's a complete gutting of the Tri-City Service District. And to somehow defend that this deal, this organizational structure represented the best interests of the Tri-City rate payers is really, really hard to find. Mr. Kabaisman, do you have anything else?
You've summed it up fairly well. Yeah, you know, it, there, it, it really comes down to creating a shell district with all the assets transferred to a, a new entity and done for.
I assume that we're gonna discuss legal options after the meeting?
We do have an executive session scheduled.
Okay, all right, so let's not get too far in the weeds on that.
Okay.
Have there been any communications with West Lynn or Gladstone about this and their potential thoughts or reactions?
There have not, I had some initial calls to Gladstone as it related to the temporary restraining order that we were putting together. Once that, I, I was not able to get in contact with them prior to the hearing. We had some conversation, email correspondence with their attorney, but I have not followed up since we got out of court around two thirty this afternoon.
I've had political discussions both with the mayor of Gladstone and Counselor Johnson and, or, sorry, Russ Axlerod, Mayor West Lynn, and Counselor Johnson of Gladstone. Gladstone is as unhappy as we are. I think West Lynn is still in that kind of confused mode about what's going on and how they think they should respond. I think they think that somehow they're reading into this that maybe there will be some local control at some time in the future. After my discussions with both Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Bernard, the likelihood of that happening sometime in the near future is, is pretty slim in my estimation. As divided as those people are up there, for some reason, they all get together on this Tri-City thing, and I think it's because they use Tri-City to subsidize CCSD one. And because the finances and all of the other stuff is so mixed up, it's a very difficult thing to, to unravel, to see where the money's coming from and where it's going. So, you know, they wanna get a hold of the cash cow before we put it back in the barn. I'm, you know, when I was talking to Commissioner Schrader, I said, you know, "I'm, I'm very disappointed that you would choose to, you know, aim a nuclear warhead at Oregon City over something like this five days before an election." And I think there is a piece of this that is about the election in that there's very likely that two of those folks won't be up there come January of next year, and this is their last little parting shot at Oregon City on their way out the door, which I find to be very petty. While I might have differences with many elected officials around the region, I try to always keep those differences on the pertinent issue at hand and not let that descend into the politics of personality. So, that's all I got to say. I am going to, whether I have permission from this commissioner or not, I'm going to say my mind at the, at the commission meeting tomorrow and would welcome any of you who would like to attend and, and assert your opinions as well. Any further discussion? Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name up there.
I so wish I could be at that meeting. But I will say that as furious as I am, and probably the rest of the commission is at the county commission, and if any citizens are furious, as furious as we are, the city commission of this town in two thousand and eight is what led us to this point. So, you know, we did have a say. And, and that's what the county's been saying all along. And, and that mistake in two thousand and eight, you'd look up who was on the commission in two thousand and eight in this town, this was a huge mistake.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion on this subject? Hearing done, we will move on to Communications, Mr. Manager.
Consent agenda, please.
Missed the consent agenda?
Yep.
I did. Does anybody wanna pull anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Please do approve.
Okay.
Second.
Led by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg, is there further discussion? Hearing done, call roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner I'd?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Now, Communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners, once again. Just two quick updates, hopefully, we, we've talked a little bit about the Riverwalk Design Alternative Presentation Workshop will be held at the Gregory Forum at Clackamas Community College on Thursday, November fourteenth, beginning at four o'clock. It's gonna be set up, there'll be more of a, a presentation at four, and then it's an open house, and then we are gonna break out into working groups at tables with, with the citizens that are in attendance, and then again at six thirty to eight. So, you've got four to five thirty, and then six thirty to eight, although it's kind of a open house, so you can come and go, but then we will have a specific presentation at those times, and then breaking into working groups around those two windows there. So, hopefully you'll be able to attend that as well. We will also be having an update to the commission at their December work session on, on where we're at with the, with the Riverwalk project as well. And then, just a reminder, City Hall will be closed on Friday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day. That's all that I have tonight.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Let's see, a number of us attended the South End Neighborhood Association meeting where they had a candidates forum and lively exchange and presentations by most of the people in this room. There was a Clackamas County Cities Dinner that most of us attended. I also had the privilege of talking with a couple of champions of the faith-based community around homelessness solutions. And they'll be meeting with individual commissioners, as well as staff with their idea. They're looking at the possibility of tiny houses on church property and exploring if there's any barriers to that in our zoning ordinance, so I thought it was a pretty creative solution and look forward to further discussions around that.
Okay. Commissioner I'd?
Couple of same things, the Clackamas Cities Dinner and the South End Neighborhood Association meeting, attended those, as well as, along with Rocky, attended the National Park Service reception at Fort Vancouver on October twenty-fourth. We met the, the new National Park Service Regional Director, her name is Laura Joss. She's responsible for overseeing like sixty-some different units in the western region of the United States, including our McLaughlin House here. So, that was a really nice reception. And then later that evening, I attended a movie presentation along with Brian of Generation Found sponsored by Oregon City Together. It's a coalition of local agencies that help to discourage substance abuse among youth in our community. It was a very moving experience. And the, I attended the OCBA, Oregon City Business Alliance, presentation on downtown Oregon City given by Jonathan Stone and had the chance to be a part of a table discussion where we talked about just various ideas for increasing tourism and business growth in Oregon City. That's it.
Commissioner Shaw?
A lot of the same, we kind of went to a lot of the same things here this last couple of weeks, but I guess a couple of things that I went to, the ribbon cutting of the Trail Distillery, which is out by the golf course, it's not in the city limits, but it's out there and stuff. They've really done a great thing for that building and they are distilling gin and vodka, gonna work on brandy and then maybe get into beer, so. It's actually, what they've done inside that building is pretty cool, Rocky, I see. And then, South Fork Water Board, and that's kind of it.
Clackamas Cities Dinner, the NPS thing was great. I missed the South Fork meeting 'cause I was at parent-teacher conferences. And, let's see, I wanted to apologize to the police department for not being at the, and code enforcement for not being at the trick-or-treat event, I had a, I really missed that. I had a tour that night, so I was getting prepared for that. But I do wanna thank the police department and city staff for their support at the high school last week, which was needed. And school, high schools working through some issues and, and, but it went, the, the walkout that the students had last week went really well. And I just wanted to thank you all for the help with that.
So, I attended most of the same things, I did not get out to the National Park Service thing. I've been really busy with my actual job this last couple of weeks, so I have made some meetings here at City Hall, but generally speaking, not a bunch. But I do wanna say, not only to the police and Public Works and the folks, but also, you know, most importantly, to downtown Main Street and the business owners and, and the folks down there who make that event really happen, those are the folks who provide the candy and, you know, give themselves. It's, it's, it's really amazing compared to many of the cities around us that, you know, if you go down there, I was down there for a couple hours in my little mayor sweatshirt, you know, wandering around talking to people, and it, it's just, it's just amazing how much giving there is down there from those businesses compared to even, even ten years ago. So, you know, I think we have ourselves, as well as them, to pat on the back, and Jonathan Stone and the Oregon City Business Alliance, and just all of our regular business owners who, who participate and make, not only that event, but the Snowflake Festival and the other kinds of things that we do in downtown and throughout Oregon City a success. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, I apologize, I had, did have one other thing. Our very own Commissioner Ronna Mengeleberg was honored this last week as the Economic Development Leader of the Year for the state of Oregon. So, we wanted to congratulate her. Would you like to say a few words, Commissioner Mengeleberg?
It's an incredible honor to be recognized by my peers around the state for the work I do, and it's very humbling, and it's a great group to work with, and I'm, it's my profession that I love.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, we will adjourn this meeting, we will reconvene into executive session. We do not anticipate that we will need to come back to make a decision in the regular meeting. With that, we are adjourned.